Gonna like, uh. Hi, good evening. That worked. Didn't it work? Okay, it works. So, good evening. This is January twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. And it is seven o- seven oh one, and we will begin our evening. Number one, called order, roll call.
Mister Hesse.
Here.
Mister Seaman. Mister Coynor.
Here.
Mister Stavopoulos.
Here.
Mister Vesey.
Here.
Miss McCumber.
Here.
Mister Petron Tony.
Here.
Thank you. Number two, approval minutes on November nineteenth, twenty eighteen.
Mister Chairman, in spite of the fact it's been some time between since the last meeting I moved, we approve the minutes as of. Trended.
I'll second.
Hey. And we have a, a call to approve. To do that? Do I have a second? We've had a second. Yes?
Yeah, we have a second here.
Okay.
Mister Petron Tony.
Good evening.
You say yes.
Yes.
We'll get there.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Miss McCumber.
Yes.
Mister Vesey.
Yes.
Mister Stavopoulos.
Yes.
Mister Coynor.
Yes.
Mister Seaman.
Yes.
Mister Hesse.
Yes. Everybody, thank you. So number three, election of officers, and I'm curious about that. Do we have new officers that we're electing?
Well, you will be, so I am going to go ahead and run the election. I hope there's no recount. Um, so I'm going to call for nominations for chair for the board. Anyone wishing to put in a nomination for chair for the board?
Please.
Somebody, you gotta nominate someone.
Well, I nominate the current chairman.
The current chairman. Is there a second? I'll second that. All right, any other nominations? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, congratulations, Mister Chairman.
Imagine that.
Yeah.
Wussies.
Any nominations for vice chair?
Will I nominate the current vice chair?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, congratulations, Mister Vice Chairman.
Wow. Congratulations. Trump would be very happy.
They reign again.
Must've had a good job.
Yeah, right.
And there's nothing in the rules of procedure that says you can't serve consecutive terms, so.
Okay. Well, I understand I have a year left.
So for our, for our new board members, what we do is in January, generally, the first meeting of the year, we always do selection of officers.
And we get drunk to work and all that, you know, so, I mean, did you, you did bring the new guys, you got, you brought tequila, right?
Oh, I didn't hear about that, that hazing ritual yet, but I'm, I'm all open to it.
Yeah.
Not hazing at all.
So, what we generally do is we do election of officers for the first week of the month that we organize here, we organize for the, for the year. And so these are the same officers that you'll have going forward for the year, then next January, we'll have another election. Hopefully, my chair and my vice chair don't leave me, but in the, if the event that they do, then we'll do another one.
Okay, and I'm gonna, if you guys don't mind, steal the, steal a show here, I'd like to introduce and welcome our two, our board, our new board members. This is, um, Dave Petron Tony. He's our regular member, and we have a new alternate member, which is Melissa Virgil, she's over here, so, um, they're both new, they were appointed at the last B O C meeting, I believe. And so they were lucky enough, since the meeting was delayed because of the holidays, that they could catch up with us for the first meeting of the year, so. I'd like you guys to welcome, and if they would like to say a little bit about, you know, their interest and why they, they've, they're serving, they're welcome to do that.
Oh, um, all right, I'll keep it quick, um, I'm pretty boring, uh, I, I did, I got my masters.
Tequila.
Exactly, that's for the next one. If y'all like me enough, bring me back, that would be like my bribe. Um, I'm, I'm, you know, like I said, pretty boring, I like public policy, I got my masters in that field. Uh, native of Tarpon, and I, you know, decided I was always involved in like theoretical work, I never did anything actually like applied like this. Um, so I decided, you know, it's time to get some good, like, municipal, uh, experience, just hands-on stuff, so. I was honored enough to be accepted, and I look forward to sitting here with y'all.
Melissa, would you like to say a few words?
Hi, Melissa. I work with my friends, I've been a lot in the city, I've been a couple of the campaigns for mayor there. Um, I have been a part of the huge funnest for a long time. I just figured it's a big step to get involved.
That's super, welcome, welcome, I appreciate that.
If there's anything myself or my staff can help you guys with as you integrate, um, we'd be glad to do that, whether it's sit down and provide resources, or if you need any information. Just get in touch with either Kim, myself, or Pat. Okay? And with that.
Thanks for helping.
I didn't mean to steal, I didn't mean to steal your thunder, but we didn't have an introductions on here because your agenda was posted in, in December to give you guys plenty of time to review the public notice stuff, so. They kinda got added at the last minute, so.
Though I have to say, I do apologize to the public, we don't have tequila here afterwards. It was just a joke. Be cautious nowadays, so, moving on. I'm disappointed, though. Uh, number four, quasi judicial announcement and swearing in of speakers.
Well, we're not going to need that tonight because the agenda does not call for any quasi judicial applications, which is why you have no one in the public, because we don't have any applications. We have two app, we had two applications, but one of the applications the staff has actually chosen, which is eighteen one forty-nine, to pull off this agenda, you'll see that in, um. Uh, February at your next meeting, we need to re-advertise it, there was a change that we decided to add to that language, so we wanna make sure that. We get that re-advertised and we'll put it back on your agenda, so. It'll be similar to the language that is actually in your packet here, but there's been some added language to that, to that stat, to that language, and it's actually available on the website. But you will have it in a packet and sent to you with the next agenda, once the agenda closes on Friday. Um, your next agenda will close on Friday, and then we'll have all applications, um, sent to you as soon as that, uh, agenda is prepared. And with that, application eighteen one forty-nine is a land development code amendment, um, to the development agreement section. It's a fairly straightforward change. The change basically includes. One forty-nine is being postponed. Yeah. So essentially what this change is, is there's a brief section under section D, or paragraph D, under section ninety-six, and this deals with the actual timeframe. That the Board of Commissioners can actually approve at, at each developer agreement, so. When a new developer agreement comes in, currently, there's a maximum timeframe of five years. The board can then extend that through another set of hearings beyond the five-year window, so they would have to come back. What we're basically giving the board the option to do here. Is to have a, uh, a developer agreement initially approved for ten years. The state statute allows for developer agreements to be. Approved for up to thirty years, where, staff's not comfortable with allowing that as an initial review, thirty years is a long time window, you don't have. Projects of the size and scale that most other communities have, they have timeframes of that long. But ten years provides an additional, um, measure that the board can go anywhere from the zero to five-year mark, or the zero to ten-year mark, or seven years, whatever they want within that window. What, as their, as part of the negotiations, so a developer agreement's a little bit different than some of the other applications that you see. Most of the provisions in the developer agreement, including the duration of the developer agreement, are negotiated between staff and the city. And then they're brought forward to the planning and zoning board for recommendation, and then they come back to the B O C for a final approval. It's a very similar process to what you see in most of your other applications, but it's a very negotiated and different process, because every provision within that agreement is actually. Has to be consistent with the land development code, but it's a negotiation, it's not, you do this and we let you go, we let you go. It's more of a ba- a back and forth that's decided between the, the two parties. So that's really what the, the crux of this change is, is just giving the board the, the, the additional five-year window that they can choose from when they're doing their negotiations through staff. For a developer to come forward with. So that's the crux of what's included in this change. Is there any questions?
Yes. So. You're asking us to give, so first off, what is? So a developer says, I want to build by the hospital in Winn-Dixie, a huge complex. In ten years from now, and we're gonna okay that, but yet things change, and that's, that's why I'm bringing this up. Because you're asking us to give a, a ten-year plan, and that, yet that was, uh, okayed ten years ago. Things are changing faster and faster every year, and the environment is changing every year, and I, I'm curious why we need to give ten years for someone to okay a project.
So, um, the particular project that you're alluding to does not have a developer agreement on it, it was not subject to a developer agreement, it was subject to a different mechanism for approval. It was part of a special area plan, and then there were multiple other approvals that were done after that. At no time was there a developer agreement that actually survived, there were about six of them that were proposed. And never survived scrutiny. So as a result of that, that was not the same process, completely different process. That project was delayed, there were multiple approvals to re-approve that project throughout two thousand fifteen, and again in two thousand sixteen. Were fi- were the final approvals for that project, so that project received more scrutiny than most projects received, because it came back through the process because of the fact that they, the, um. Timeframes lapsed, so it's a different mechanism that you're dealing with in that particular project. The reason why this is being proposed is it's to give. Developers opportunities to have at least the opportunity to negotiate a longer time period when they have a more complicated project that requires. Multiple different approvals, including rezonings, annexations in some, in some, in some instances. It gives them, the board, the opportunity, that does not say that the Board of Commissioners are going to give a ten-year approval. That is at their discretion, the B O C's discretion, how long of a timeframe that they're going to give. They can give anywhere from a one-year timeframe. To a ten-year timeframe should this pass. Right now, they can give anywhere from one year to five years. And there's a, there's a mechanism within that five-year window for them to come back and request with a single B O C hearing, an extension of an additional five years.
Can we change the year?
What is the?
Like if we say seven?
What's the difference between the seven and ten years if the B O C gets the opportu-
I just, I, look, I, I'm, I'm very concerned about what's happening with development today. And it's the rapid expansion of things, and I think a lot of things are getting approved faster than they should be without consideration of what's going on. I'm really upset about what's happened with this thing by Winn-Dixie. And I see, I drive fifty-four, I see all these apartments going up and, and land that, you know, I, I'm just, I just think that. I think. A- as a ex-builder in this area, I just think that ten years is a long time to give someone a chance to. Uh, persuade people to let me have my project. I, I'm sure that there's other comments on the board here, but. I know that, um. Planning and zoning and zone laws and revisions and things like that take time, but. I, I'm just asking questions, that's all. Uh, anybody else on the board have any other questions about that?
I have the same, I have the same concerns. It seems a bit, that something is wrong when you've got ten years or something like that all of a sudden. I. My concern is all of a sudden, it just seemed that, that wetlands was destroyed. We've got apartments going. That's my concern.
Anyone else?
Has the city come across applications or developers that hit that five-year window? Is that why you're trying to extend? Is that common?
We absolutely have examples of this, Bay Shore Heights was, was an example of that, that, that developer agreement had to be extended. Um, so did the developer agreement with Lowe's have to be extended, uh, both of those were extended as a result of the change in the economic conditions. Uh, money became very difficult, capital became very difficult to acquire for developers, so those projects stalled. As a result of them stalling, they had to come back through the re-approval process. Had they had the opportunity to negotiate at the time, a longer time period. It would have provided for a, a, an additional benefit for those developers. We currently have a developer coming in. Who's looking to construct an additional, um, hotel next to the hotel out on nineteen, there's a, um, Holiday Inn Express going there. He's currently working through the negotiation process for the developer agreement. He is interested in having a longer timeframe than five years, simply because he's trying to negotiate a connection behind the hotel that actually gets him an additional connection into the. Uh, mobile home park behind on their roadway, which would provide additional access. And that's not something that's going to be worked out overnight, simply because there are just so many parties involved in that agreement, so he recognizes that that's going to take some time to do. As a result, a five-year window may not work for them to actually get through the construction. They also need to, um, get some additional approvals. Through the, uh, Ford Pinellas, which is also going to delay some of what they need to get done, so. As a result of their very complicated process, they're looking to, this is something that would help them. Um, there are some other things that would help them, but we're not at this point willing to give the concessions that they're looking for on those, those additional items. This is something that. Statutorily, the board is requi- is allowed to go up to thirty years. I don't think that hoteler needs a ho- needs that long. But there is still ripples in the, in the economy, as a result of those ripples, it becomes difficult for capital to be secured. For larger projects like a hotel site, and those are desirable projects for this, for the, for this community. This community is looking for hotels, it just recently went through. In two thousand seventeen and adopted the additional standards in the countywide rules. To allow for us to re-zone and change the land use on properties specifically to allow for larger hotel sites, so that we can attract in a hoteler. In a different part of the city. It's great that we're getting a Holiday Inn Express, and it's great that it's adjacent to the existing Hampton Inn, because they can do shared services, and there's a lot of things that they can do together, but that is not the only location that people are desiring to have a hotel site. So as a result, in order to attract in those businesses, we need to provide incentives for them to go through the process. Developer agreements are not an easy process for the developer to go through. It becomes a very co- a very complicated process, and so. The more we can provide them some guarantees that their approval, once it's, once it's been granted, is their approval for whatever the timeframe is. The more they're willing to bring, come to the table and negotiate with us. We end up with a better product that way and a better project. Um, because we can get things that are not currently in our land development code, we can secure things like additional funding for fire trucks, additional funding for other facilities. That we don't necessarily acquire through the land development code process, the way the land development code regulations are written. It's a different process, it's not a easy process by any means for the developers' perspective. But they are willing to go through those because they get a guarantee, or at least a more guaranteed solution, because essentially whatever the land development code regulations are at the time that they go through that process. That is what's frozen in time for them. So they know that the certainty that's in that book for that time is a certainty that they have. Now, that doesn't mean that they don't have to meet state regulations, and that does, if they change, and that doesn't mean that they don't have to meet, come up to standards. It just means that they get some, they get some guarantees that they wouldn't otherwise get in the land development code. So that's the difference between developer agreement and our other approvals.
In the development agreement, do they have to actually complete construction within the five years? Or pull the final building permit for construction?
It depends on what's, it depend on, it depends on the triggers that are negotiated into the actual developer agreement. It depends on what the board stipulates. Under, through the staff and negotiations on what are the, what are the triggers? Is it a C O? Um, like it is in the project, project over here at New Year's Crossing, they can't pull C O one until the road goes through? Is it something like that that's, that's a trigger? All of those things, again, are, are up for negotiations when you're using a developer agreement.
So as it sits right now, if this, if the council wanted to negotiate it that way. It could be five years to pull the final building permit, and then still another two or three years to build out, right? So as it is right now, it could theoretically be seven years or so.
Well, that depends on the Florida Building Code, because again, the Florida Building Code requires certain, certain inspections to be pulled, pulled, pulled at certain times, but there are, there are, again, extensions allowed under Florida Building Code, so yes, theoretically. Even if the developer agreement says a five-year window, that doesn't mean if they've actually pulled and gotten into the building permit section that they can't actually get extended out, but there is no guarantee of that. So from a developer's perspective, you're not giving them a guarantee, and the Florida Building Code is a moving target.
So are we selling our soul to give them an extension?
Not necessarily. You can decide as a board to not even, to recommend denial of this application, and all that happens is they are gonna come back forward, come back through the process after their five-year window and request another five years. That's the difference. So, right now, as of right now, they would, they have to request the five year, they can get up to five years through the negotiation, then they can come back through the process and get another five years, they can come back through the process and get another five years. They can come back through the process and get another five years, and they can go on like that.
Or another ten, or another ten, or another ten.
I think the five.
I think five is fine.
Could, could I ask a question? Just so I under- understand it right. And I know you've said five, five times, so I'm gonna say it one more time. Currently, the development agreements are for five years, or less.
Correct.
And you're proposing that it gets extended to up to ten years should the council.
Correct.
See so. And currently, there's applications pending that would directly benefit certain applicants.
Correct.
And so perhaps we're, you are proposing an adjustment to our. Code and regulations specifically to benefit an applicant?
Incorrect. We are providing the, uh, the opportunity to have a discussion at the B O C level, that's what this application is for. So that this, this issue can be discussed on whether or not it is. Reasonable to consider extending out the developer agreement timeframe beyond the five-year window.
Wh- why is that developer that has so much at stake not with us tonight?
Because he's in Ohio, and he is not got that much at stake, this is just something that, that he brought to our attention as an issue. It's, he's not the first developer who's brought that, that, that same information to us, that this is, that this is an issue. Um, they, again, are looking for, they're looking for the ability to vest, at least somewhat vest into a community. So that they know that they have the guarantee of the code. Every time they come to before the board, that reopens their project to scrutiny, to changes in the code that have occurred, all of those different types of things under the developer agreement.
What, what are the specific advantages to the city and to the citizens in this proposed change? The specific advantages to the citizens of the community?
It provides the board the opportunity during the negotiation project, process with a developer. To provide an additional window of time for that developer to complete their project. That is the, that is the benefit to all in this, in this option. That is the only real benefit here, because it's all that we're talking about is changing the window of time, and it's the potential window of time, it's not a guaranteed you're getting ten years because the code says you're getting ten years. Again, you're dealing with a document that is completely negotiated. It is not something that you just get blindly, this is what the regulations say, so you can have it, you can request that. But if you're not gonna prove to me, wh- to the board in general, that you have a. Phasing schedule or something that justifies that, again, right, you're gonna want some type of justification as for, as to why they're asking for that ten years. What, what is it that, about your particular project that makes it? Need more than five years, or need more than three years, or need more than two years? What is the phasing schedule look like? Is it that the buildings are phased over time for some type of benefit? What is, what does that schedule look like? That's, that's the whole, the whole crux of the issue is, there has to be some type of justification. Shown during that, that process, that the board agrees to that ten-year timeframe.
Thank you.
Any more comments?
I, I have a comment. When, when.
Can we do comments now, or do we?
Or do we have to move on, or discussion?
Can do anything you would like to do, uh, this is, while we have to open this to the public, there really isn't a public here to participate.
I know, that, does that comment, the comment, my question was, does that comment, staff comments, but we have to actually, uh, vote on this right now.
Correct.
I'm gonna ask the board if they have any more com- comments, I guess we can discuss it between ourselves now? Wait, so I guess I should say, the public discussion is now closed?
Well, did we ever open it? We didn't formally open it.
Okay, so we can discuss it amongst ourselves then, correct?
Just for the record, there are no members.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
So, when I pull open the pantry for my kids to have breakfast, and they got a choice between Cheerios and Cocoa Puffs, what do you think they asked for? Cocoa Puff. And if any developer, and, and I'll give a disclaimer here, I worked for an apartment developer for a number of years. Sand Companies Inc. out of Minnesota, and we developed apartments down here. And developers are a unique breed. Um, there's only one number that they're gonna ask for in their application. No one's gonna ask for one, no one's gonna ask for two, no one's gonna ask for five, they're gonna ask for ten, period. Well, let's just be honest with our. Let's just be honest with ourselves, is that should we decide this is the right thing, every single development agreement that will be issued here, two, four, will be for 10 years.
Right.
Maybe that is a terrific thing. Perhaps developing apartments or hotels is the most important thing for the city of Tarpon Spring. I don't know that. I don't think that having them come back after five years and saying please and us looking at it again is necessarily a bad thing. That's the end of that comment. Thank you.
I'd like to say that five years, a lot changes in five years, especially with the hurricanes and climate change and economy and everything else. I think five years is plenty. If they're going to come back and say, hey, I need an extension, then at that time after five years, they can have the extension. I don't see why they need 10 years. Anyone else? Nope. All right, then can we call for a vote, please? Oh, sorry. Motion, please? Someone? Or comment?
I'm going to motion that in regards to proposed, I forgot my spectacles, forgive me.
Application 18-148?
Application 18-148 is denied.
Do you want to hear a second?
Seconded.
We have a vote, please? Did we do that right? Because from what I understand, application 18-149 has been taken off the record. Is that correct? So we're only talking about 18-148? Correct?
Mr. Petron Tony?
Just for clarification. You deny. Saying yes. Yes.
Thank you.
I'll vote, oh, wait, go ahead. All right, I'll vote yes on this.
Ms. McCumber?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Stropolos?
Yes.
Mr. Koiner?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Hesse?
Yes. Thank you. Motion has been, I'm not sure if it approved or denied, I guess, right? Motion has been approved. And the recommendation is not make a change to the code. Thank you. Thanks to all my help. Okay, moving on. Number six, application 18-149 is not on the record tonight. That's been changed. And we move on now to number seven, staff comments.
Staff comments, we handed out a revised schedule to you guys. The one that was in your packet was the one that was the schedule until we found out there was a conflict in the TRC agendas essentially.
And I already put circles all over my calendar.
Well, yours hasn't changed. The planning and zoning meetings remain the same. All of the other boards remain the same with the exception of the TRC. But because we provide an entire schedule to you, we're providing you the revised schedule so that you have the full information should you want to attend one of those or whatever. I mean, they are open to the public, so you can't speak, but they are open to the public. Since those have changed to the second and fourth Thursday, we wanted to make that, you aware of that. With the exception of the one on the 4th of July, we moved that to the 3rd of July. So that'll be a Wednesday. But that's our only comment.
Okay, thank you. And now we move on to number eight, board comments. Discussion item, public notice requirements, one of my pet peeves.
So the board directed staff to provide the sections of the code so that you could have a conversation with us and possibly make some recommendations to the city manager on changes that you think are necessary to the public notice requirements of the land development code. So I went through every section of the land development code that I possibly could that has notice requirements and provided those to you. We send them out to you in December with the expressed understanding that you would have more than a month to review those sections of code and hopefully you guys got a chance to go through them with the holidays and that type of thing. And you've had most of January too, because I know we resent it out. So as a result, that's what we have here. This is basically just an open discussion on the site plan and other sections that allow for public notice where public notice is required for you guys to provide to staff your concerns, comments, recommendations, and I will pass those along to the city manager.
My concern has been several times here of the 200-foot notice when you're applying for a building permit or a change in, as we all know, there's an issue in the fruit bowl here of someone building a two-story garage that really wasn't necessary in that area. And it was only a 200-foot notice. And I've asked several times for a 500-foot notice because a 200-foot notice is only two houses on either side. And that 500-foot notice would give more people in the neighborhood, in the historic zone, an opportunity to review and understand. So what is happening with that? I've asked that several times. You guys have said you're looking into it and I haven't heard yet, other than the fact that you're looking into it. I want to know what's happening with, I want a 500-foot notice.
That's what this discussion is for, for you to make your formal recommendations that the staff will then take to the city manager and the city manager will determine how he wants to present those to the BOC. Whether it be through amendments to the land development code, whether it be through a workshop with the BOC members, whatever that needs to be, that's what this discussion is specifically for.
So I asked that about four, five, six months ago. So I understand now why somebody wants a 10-year recommendation. I don't understand why it takes so long to just ask for a recommendation. I mean, I want this recommendation to whoever we need to, to get this thing changed. How do we do that?
And we would be glad at the end of this discussion to provide all of your recommendations to the city manager for him to determine on where he would like those recommendations to go.
But why does it take six months to do that? That's what I'm trying to understand. I mean, I'm frustrated with government, I think we all are, that's why we're here. And I'm just curious why it takes so long to have that recommendation to someone else to finally make a decision?
And once again, at the conclusion of this discussion, we will provide your recommendations, all of your recommendations, to the city manager for him to make a determination on where he would like that information to go, whether it's going to the Board of Commissioners in an amendment or whether he wants to have a workshop to discuss it, whatever his discretion is that he would like to do. We're just here to collect the information to provide it onto the next stage.
Okay, thank you. And that then, recommendation will be given to them when?
I do not know that. That's something that I would have to discuss with the city manager and it would be at his discretion.
So it could be another six months?
That is up to the city manager. I'm just here to collect the information and provide it to the city manager.
All right, I'm sorry. I'm just like, this is ridiculous. I just find this absolutely ridiculous that it takes, no wonder some developer wants a 10-year extension to get something done. I'm just asking to someone to go talk to them and say, hey, we need another extension. Why does it take so long? That's what I'm trying to understand.
We're here to collect.
I know, you've said that. Why does it take so long?
Look, we're doing the best we can with the staff that we have available to provide all of the necessary documents and all of the necessary information for this board and to support all of the boards. We are, you are one of three boards that we are staffed to. We have other applications and other sections of code that we're currently working on. We are three people. We process a lot of applications and we're doing the best that we can to provide the services to this board and to provide the information. We have just recently gone through the budget process to get an entire land development code rewrite. After three years of requesting it, we have now gotten the opportunity to do that. We are in the process of trying to go out and get a consultant to do that. These, all of these provisions and all of the requests that everybody has been asking for, the Dark Skies Initiative, this initiative, HBB changes, all of those have been prioritized on a list to be included with the consultant's documentation to be provided to them so that a holistic approval can be done and review can be done in the land development code so we don't continually keep changing section after section after section and leave in problem areas that then never get addressed because of the fact that we didn't think about that because we wanted to force through a change, one change. There are all kinds of different notice requirements in here outside of a 500-foot radius. There are notice requirements to go in the paper. There is a different process for site plans, there's a different process for HBB. This is giving you the opportunity to go through all of those different sections of code and either decide which ones you want to address holistically, so that you're dealing with it all at once. Because what's going to happen is if we make a one change to HBB's change to 500-foot radius, okay? We make that one change, we're going to have somebody come in and say, I want my conditional, I want conditional use to be 500. And we're going to be doing this over and over and over. You have three staff members, two of which are your planners. You have no city planner at this point. We have been going out for a city planner for seven months and found no one. So as a result, this staff is doing the best that it can to prioritize all of the different changes that people want and to provide it holistically to a consultant so that we can get it on the docket for you to review section by section of the land development code and make your recommendations to the BOC. And then the BOC can go through it forward and decide if they want to make those changes. That is what we are trying to do as a staff. It is not an easy accomplishment.
So let me be clear that I would never even assume that you guys are not working hard. You've done an excellent job always. But it just seems to me that, you know, when you say, you bring this up and every time it's like, it takes more time, more time, more time. And that also makes us understand why a developer wants 10 years for something like that. So I'm just asking, in your opinion, in your opinion, I'm not asking for anything else, when do you think this change might happen?
I have no opinion of when it's going to happen because I have zero control over what goes to BOC, when it goes to BOC. We make a recommendation to the city manager and the city manager decides on what gets prioritized first to go to BOC.
Okay.
So when that happens, when he makes a decision based on your recommendations, whether he wants to roll these into the land development code changes holistically or deal with them separately, that is going to be at his discretion.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Is our only line of communication with the Board of Commissioners through the city manager and through this process in regards to any topic whatsoever?
With regards to changes, to official changes to a land development code, this is the process that's outlined in the land development code and in the, your board procedures for you to communicate formally with the board.
So as an individual citizen, no. As a board, yeah, this is the only way. There are procedures set out within the Code of Ordinances that give you your powers and duties as a board. Your powers and duties, including making recommendations on applications that come before you, are to review the code, the land development code, and make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners as to what you'd like to be changed.
Okay, thank you. And so, yeah.
And so then, there's a procedure that follows after that.
And that's what I suspected. And now, this is total humor. If I were a developer that lived in Utah and wanted to change my land development agreement from five to 10 years, I could probably have gotten that done. But if I sat here on this board and asked for a change several times, we'd be in the mud. Now, this is total, this is just between us. But if I were on the outside asking in, somehow they can get this drawn up, put in, and it's a topic that we get a vote on. But should the chairman ask month after month after month for a change of a 500-foot mailing rule, and I remember distinctly the day that you asked for it, I guess I would just question where the priorities are. In the politest way.
So without a consensus of this board, that those are your recommendations, that's one board member asking for that change?
No, we actually had a discussion among us regarding this issue. I was here, we were all involved with.
I must have not been here that day.
We, so I beg to differ.
There was the discussion, but there was never consensus. Because I never asked for a consensus vote as to whether it was a consensus to make that recommendation to staff.
Well, maybe you didn't bring it up that we needed a consensus on that.
There was never, there was always a discussion item. There was never anything that said, we're going to make this recommendation. Had there been, we would have had a consensus from the full board.
Well, I guess we were all.
We had asked them to research and find out like what other cities were doing and so forth.
They asked for that. So, all right. So in the future, if we want to change something, do we need to ask the attorney? Then how, do we need a consensus or we need to be more clear about what we want?
Well, there needs to be an agenda item on it first, or there is an agenda item right now.
Okay, so where do we go from here?
If you want.
We're just stupid, so we want to know.
My question is, is that the only thing that you want to make a recommendation on based on, there's a.
That's the only thing we've discussed in the last several months.
The HBB language is in there for the section of code that dictates the 200-foot radius is in that thing. All of the notice requirements are in there.
So and that's what's highlighted, correct?
Right. And it's, remember, there's a 200-foot notice requirement for several different things. So that is the information that's been provided by staff. Holistic recommendation. So are you, I guess my question to the board is, are you making it sense that you want anywhere that it says 200-foot radius, it's supposed to want it extended to 500?
All right, so question to the board. I personally have not read through. Has anyone else here read through? So may I make a recommendation, I hate to do it, that we, can we postpone this until our next meeting? And I recommend that all of us at the board read this thing thoroughly and we come back and we make a decision on.
Chairman.
Satisfy the city and the attorney and everybody else.
If there's a leap of faith, sorry, chairman, I in fact have and did. And since your request or the concept is very concrete and very specific, although there is a lot of highlighted items, there is only one number that is listed. It is only 200 feet. Your request and our idea of consensus is specifically 500 feet. I think it would be fair to say that we could ask for that consensus on that agenda item to move that forward. I would be comfortable proposing that.
What applications? What applications do you want the 500 foot on? Because there's several different application types that require, that require notice of surrounding property owners. It's not just historic preservation.
I know, but I mean, if you're going to build a commercial building, wouldn't it be nice?
Commercial buildings do not require notice. So site plan does not require any notice requirements.
Then I'm going to say, I agree with the 500 feet. I think everybody, I mean, 500 feet is two houses on either side.
Okay, but 500 feet for what application is what I'm trying to clarify. You have a majority of, you have different applications here that require.
Tell me something that 500 feet would be a really problem.
I'm not saying that 500 feet is a problem. I'm asking you to give me which applications you want to address.
All applications that a footage mailing notice would be appropriate for, whether it crosses the boundary of historical, residential, commercial, renovation.
That's way too broad. Your current regulations don't include every application that you actually see for notice. So you've got to give me more detail on what you're actually trying to accomplish.
You've got to give us a little more detail then.
Okay, so conditional uses, conditional uses require 200 foot. HBB applications require 200 foot. Your variances of applications require 200 foot plus an advertisement in the newspaper, plus they require a sign on the property. Your conditional uses require additionally a sign on the property as well as the 200 feet. Site plans require no notice. Your annexations require notice, 200 feet. They require an ad in the newspaper. They require notice on the property. Your land development code changes, your zoning changes, they require 200-foot notice. They require a sign on the property. They require advertising in the newspaper. Your land use changes, they require 200-foot notice. They require a sign on your property. They require an ad in the newspaper. So you've got to be very, very specific.
I don't see a problem with any of those being 500 feet.
I feel like we're going in a circle here. I think we dictated that we would like to have 500.
The 500 feet is not what I'm disputing. I would like clear direction from this board on which particular applications you want to deal with. If you want to deal with all of the applications that currently have 200-foot radius, then that is what you need to say and you need to direct the staff to do that. You need to be very specific. I'm asking for specific, detailed. I am asking for a specific, detailed recommendation on what you're looking for. That's what we are asking for here.
Anything that has the 200, anything that has the 200 feet in it has to be changed to 500.
Is that the agreement of the board?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I know. So...
Forgive me.
By show hands, is there a consensus for this?
Can I ask something else?
Of course you can.
The 15 days notice, which would be in the newspaper and also in the mailing, is that an appropriate time? Or do we need to extend that time as well as 15? It's just because that's everywhere also in every conditional use.
As long as you receive a notice, that's fine.
It's the 15 days. Okay, I wasn't sure.
Without looking at it, yeah, without looking at the specifics, I couldn't tell you.
Tell me next.
From a legal perspective, I would...
Okay.
I can tell you annexation deviates from that window as well, because it's a different statute for voluntary annexation. So the noticing requirements for the timeframes are different.
So what newspaper do you advertise into?
Tampa Times. And we try to use exclusively the North Times Edition, so it's the Friday Edition, so that everyone knows.
That was kind of what I was looking at, like once a week, like even the Beacon comes out once a week, so that 15 days.
We don't use the Beacon. We use the Times.
There's a case law on that has to be, has to be a big part of that it can work.
So I have a question. What about other forms of, you know, the world is changing. There's Facebook, there's this, there's that. I mean, have we thought about, you know, newspaper costs money? But is there some other ways? I mean, I'm sure that news, actual newspaper circulation has dropped tremendously. I mean, we need to think about the future a little bit and think about other forms of informing people.
Okay, so the newspaper is statutorily required on most of the applications, including variances, your land use change, your zoning change, your annexations. So your conditional uses and HBB applications have been standardized to include all of those things, although your conditional use doesn't require advertising.
I got to tell you, since I've been on this board, is probably the only time I've ever started looking at those stupid ads in the paper. And most of the time, I'm like, oh, what's that? I just like, I don't think that, I bet if you took a consensus of people who get a newspaper, there's probably maybe 1% or 2% that actually look at that stuff in the newspaper. We've got to think about, this is comments, we've got to think about other forms of informing the public.
I will tell you there's a problem.
Oh, I see it. I understand that. But I mean, come on, how many people get a newspaper?
Well, that is a statutory requirement. Do you have a problem with that?
Okay, well, I'm just bringing it up. I think that, you know, it's the future, folks. I mean, we got to talk to somebody and say, we got to figure this out, because millennials are not getting any newspapers. They don't, hell, they don't even get cable TV anymore.
Everyone looks at it on their phone.
Well, the other thing too is when you're talking about advertising in the newspaper, it's in the online edition.
It's in whatever the legal ad is for that online edition. I don't use the online edition, so I don't know.
All right, all right, let's move on. So are there any other board comments tonight? Been an interesting evening. No? Then I recommend adjournment. May I have a recommendation?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion tab. We're moving on. Okay. I feel so useless here sometimes.
Everyone's wild.
I just, I just...